Iya.
O si si leleli Afrika, malu pa isu monolayo. Iswai nijana soye ju. O si si lela china, usoloano. N'kwe la buluka si chabasa e su. N'kwe lise nijali masweli.
N'kwe buluke.
N'kwe buluke si chabasa. E su si chabasa, San Afrika, San Afrika. Edi toso anonseni, edi dinge vanonsin. Kusirbehehebeles, anikla se anuhi. Sanse all to come together and united we shall stand. Let us live as one thing in San Afrika.
N'kosi, n'kouli wetu. Ndi pinda, ndibulise abantu abadala, nditi moruweni bazalbeitu. Nditi pansi, ngokshuku mezo, abantu abadala, pansi.
Pansi.
N'kosi, namchange, silapa? Si thanda abantu beitu abadala? Aba senza ekubelini sibe kwezi tafilis kieluzo? Sibe poto poto ngolshobo smashenga lo apa? Ngena yaabo.
I would like to thank the elderly people, who are the cause of us to be here today. As beautifully as we are on this table, we are here because of them.
Si ayazi ke indoba? Izi indo, namachacha, zia chinja.
We know things and times have changed.
Inaki azoke yokoba? Goko, si petwenga, abantu ana beitu esbaza layo.
The problem and the challenge that we are facing now today is our children are in control of us.
Ungoko ke unhuunkulu i komitia konna yakuwa social development. Itema ike ise, iso utibansa amechonaani.
That is why the National Assembly, the Portfolio Committee of Social Development, has decided to come today and meet with you in person.
Futi savumela, nangamchelo mnye obama sishanga nise imatole yonkana. Kubekho abantu kuingi ngena ngena, abazaukazu utatumiyalezo, wanamchange.
We all agree in one voice that we should bring the whole of Imatole from different areas to be at one venue, to participate in this program.
Pamkoba kesikube n'umtunbi noko masiza zise nazuba ni tetanobani.
Before we go forward with our proceedings, we should start by introducing ourselves so that you know who you are dealing with.
Ukwenzela, nosomlo mowalapie kaya esimthandayo oze usisi masa, namchange.
So that the speaker of this area, who is going to welcome us today or hosting us today, so that she should know who she is welcoming.
Thank you very much. Naika, malam, eh, Lenkobe, ndingunonkosi. Mvana, inkoska ziyase ma bongo yini. Eh, u.
My name is N'kosi Mvana, the... The grand...
No, no, the wife, the wife, I'm married, I got married, I'm Mrs. Mvana, by the way.
The wife of Amabongwe in Whittlesey.
Eh, istuko. Yaya zape kaya siya stand istuko, ndingu mamcha we, macha we akonapu.
And the clan name I know in this area, you are not complete if you did not introduce yourself by the clan name. I'm from Amachawe, and Amachawe are here today.
Diza ukela ke amalungo abalule kleyo ekomite na o, azazi se kanga ngoko e funa.
I will give the honourable members of the committee to introduce themselves also.
Alright. Good morning, my name is Alexandra Abrams. I'm a member of the Social Development Portfolio Committee. I represent the Democratic Alliance, and I live in the Western Cape province.
Potani.
Good morning and welcome, and I look forward to the engagement with you.
O tetanke ngu Alexandra Abrams, o sugapakui pondolinjona kolunyungo, okwali lungu lalekomite, esamke lake yongele ngenkinyaya ilaba, namchange.
Moruweni, eka malam, Ubridget Masango. I am a member of this portfolio committee. I am looking forward to the engagement today.
Oma masango, yena ke okwalulu ngulalekomite, uchikiya uyayila ngazelela ke liminye, namchange.
N'kosi, ngoko. Eh, ngoko, sishaka kshe nomta wetu we program, oka ye iskulato.
Now we are proceeding with our program.
Ne sishilu basi zunilebazi saapa?
As I indicated earlier, we are not going to delay you.
Siza unika uspika, usomlo mo wenzu yala pa ekaya ye maspala, asamkele azazi se na ye, isenoba, njengoba sina bonika kshasiboka kubangbani, azthase atawu kubaseske esamkele.
I'll give over to the speaker of the local municipality to welcome us so that she can also introduce herself. As we are seated in different areas here in the house, we can't see properly, so it would be good for her to introduce herself.
Thank you very much, Honorable Chairperson.
N'kosi ka kulei?
Eh, mandi tate, oka ye fonde bulise.
Let me start by introducing myself before I greet.
Eh, lo ume apa pamkuenu, uspika walapa emuma, uma, eh... Monika Ikama.
The one standing is the speaker of the Muma Municipality, Monica Aba.
Eh, elinye kika malam, kuba omaza labamba konna balapa ngapagati, ndi vandi jongile, iabotu salendoga Monika, kutando kazi elomzi Ikama.
My, the name that was given to me when I got married was, I was given the name of Tando Kazi. That's the name that was given by my in-laws.
Eh, mandi tate eltuba, ndizibulisele kuni, awo ndinga libalanga, osathase istukunozulu, mpafano tukela. Owendele, ebasutini, osutu, omahlatsi, oma nguan. Omaza lawamna, omaza lawamu konna pangapambili, kwe sekendro na, kwe pakamisa pa. Eh, ndiaba bonosutu bani sa bakoyo apa, nomama wa, mka nganclanele nobusa apa. Ndimfunele se, namchange, nditi kanimfunele, ebengofile wa, dibuyele kui, utani difunele ngemisteki, ndiamfusentele, gongo nduotuka, kaga ndi uzha apa, kana ngalela. Na yamotu, sintoba bonema, ndilapa apambili. Eh, ndiabulisa amambongo, amambongo kumpuisa, ukos umvemnyama. Eh, eh, mandi tate eltuba. Pa Mrs. Anderson, ndisa pa Mrs. Anderson, disa. Eh, mandi tate eltuba, ndizibulisele eh, kwe portfolio committee, esuka kunational, yakuwa social development, e kokelwe, uchepesini, umama, unomva, N'kosi, Mvana.
Gratitude to the portfolio committee led by the chairperson, Honourable N'kosi Mvana.
N'kosi sele, kuomama, abadala, omaza labetu, omakulu beitu, abantu beitu kuinto yonke, nota ata, nota mkulu, ndizibulisele kupobonge, abazali beitu, base imatole.
Gratitude to all the women who are our parents, our mothers-in-law, our grandmothers, as well as the fathers and the grandmothers.
Ibizo anga ye, indoba sisukapina.
We will remember where we are coming from, that was culminated that this month is named after him.
Iyo kele ndo ibangela, indoba kubekona, eh, latetia ke ozalaka, ke 18, ibi celebratewa globally. Eh, kuseliprewa, imsebenzi yake, emile, yoku khulula, abantu abamnyama. Ne zika ba ate wazalala, ukusbeka glenda usiku yonamchange.
That is why that his birthday is celebrated globally, that is the 18th of July, is celebrated globally. It's, we celebrate his life, we celebrate the roles and the footprints that he has left and the role he played in freeing all of us.
Eh, unesin mande la ke our father of the nation. Eh, lenyang, lonyaka kana, k2023, simcelebrata ngethim, epumakuye emlo nin, esiti kwa eteta. It is in our hands to make our world a better one for all.
Birthday under, that have quoted in English.
Eh, uti ilapa, uti ezandin, ukuchinja ubomi, babantu abanga tatinduin. Lo ndoke, ayondo ekufaneli indoba sienza, kule nyanga katu lai. Indo ekfanele indoba, ngalolonge itlasha, kwindawo esithala kuyo, silyazama kanga ngoko, ubuchinja ubomi ba societyitu. Ngoko uti, sorka ngim, senze, okuningi esikuazi yo, ukwenza, ukuniki supporti, nobukhasa lowo ngatatinduin.
To change our lives and everything around us. It is in our hands, as he says, we should not do it only in this month. We should do it in every day's life to change the lives of those who are... So give support to them.
Eh, nditi ke, ndianamke la ngaloma zwi, eh, nditi kululekani, nibuze apone ngapondio konna. Eh, njengogo siyazi ukuti le portfolio committee, esuka kunational yakuwa social development. Ize ngokoba, ise kuni, ninka abantu abadala, iso kwenza i amendment. Kwe, kwe landuka, iso kwenza i amendment eh, for a public hearing on the pensions amendment bill. Landiti kukuzanyu konyu chongwa pana, pa indoba itini na i indosi lungi sa pisitini. Ni tetekanga ngoko, indoba, ayitina, ingati kagnokwenza kanga ngolshobo, no shobo, no shobo, zo nezo zintoni zetayo, bazaustata, benyu genazo, bacho, indoba imatole yona. Iti nokolom tetu, kagnokokunyoselelo ngolshobo, kunga ke benngono. Iti bani se zonke ke ezinmoko, ziza kwenzo akuso zonke ez regin. Eh, ngaloma zwi, nditi nikotan kosi misela kanga ngoko, N'kosi.
With those few words, I want you to feel free, feel welcomed, and do inquire when you don't understand. Please participate in this program, which is led by the portfolio committee, in this amendment bill that has to do with the elderly people. You must make your good contributions and give the committee your inputs and say, "We as Imatole, we think this can be better or better for us if you can do it in this way and this way." So that your input should be included with the input of the entire provinces that the committee is going to visit. In those words, I say, "Feel free and make good contributions."
N'kosi, masimkobilisankabeitu, usomlo mo.
Thank you to the speaker.
Samta prita.
It's shuku shukuma.
I'm watching at you. Alright, bazali, ndifalenda zise kuyene, nabantu esiyambanayo, itim lesiyambanayo?
Parents, I need to introduce the support team that is with us.
Sinabantu abanga ba, banga ba toliki, kuyena baba si, zama ukusfaka kolu nui milucha, lusanda ukwamke loa.
We have interpreters, including those who are introducing us in this new twelfth language that has been signed recently.
Can they stand up and wave?
Abapakameke, abapakamshisank.
Naboke, bakwali nbeitu.
There they are.
Naani namke loe, enoko ba akange nizwenka makama inu?
You are also welcome, as much as your names are not mentioned.
Sinabantu apa abakwepeza yo, batata, yonke lendosi tetayo, embangi yo, bakube kuya kunusho apa siyalgoba unui mi, indoba kfunkebeve, bakutwani na.
We also have the secretariat or the scribers who are picking up all the points that are being echoed here. That's also the reason why we have to interpret, because this needs to be recorded in a language that is understood to everybody.
Sisuka naboke bo napha, eh, kapha, kwankunkulu ma, bapakamise, bapakame, babulisa balaba.
They are coming from Cape Town with us, they should stand up and wave for the elderly.
Si poteki ile ke kuba asiboni ipalamente, yalape pisho, esiklinse kleyo indoba na yo, iya yazi, lomchanga nuwanamchange, antiboni apa.
We are a bit disappointed because we don't see the provincial legislature from pisho, because I'm pretty sure that they are aware that we are here today, but I don't see them here.
Sinabokena, ebetu, nanse ndwe mandini kshe dele yon. Medani ningume, okoko, ngoba niyavela, etivini, niyavela na kutwitter, niyavela... Oh, it's not a joke, niyavela na ku-youtuber, njengoba sikheli stetup. So bulebele kutumba, abantu alabako, basa muzama kun, wambi kanga kukumpile kwenzanchani.
Let me hint you, you must please smile because we are on TV, on Twitter, on Facebook, on all the social networks of parliament. You must smile so that your grandchildren should not ask you, "Why are you so ugly?" When we are attending these sessions, please smile.
Niyanbona mos, niyanbon.
You can see I'm always smiling.
Naabaya ke dekheli pabo na, klanda obanga wave shanjisa, funeka banga pakam.
There they are, they can wave their hands.
Wave shani baki, naabaya. Si, sina yo iti department yakuwa social development?
We also have the Department of Social Development.
Eh, yalape pondwe, nikona?
Do we have the provincial department?
Nanse ya ipakamisa.
There's somebody standing there.
Pakamisa mfonte, naabaya onunchalo mele, banga.
There they are, our social workers from the province.
Banga kutsa kutsi, bani zimele, ma vesen ngapambili.
They should not hide, they should come forward.
Nanse istulo apa ngapambili? Isandinga pambi, isanu kushek, bas kushek agu. Goba nisa ufunipe ye, nuwenga pumiyo. N'kosi, siyabulela bapi zee, zee credentials, ma betun, kagenasba omaza labalabo.
I was not aware my in-laws are also here.
Elo huta Ikama, ngomtunzi. Dingunomtunzi okpumla, njengoba nani nizo okpumla pakum.
The name that was given to me by my in-laws when I got married was, is Nomtunzi.
Ndi chilo ke ba inkoska ziyase ma bongo yini?
I'm from the Amabongwe clan.
Ombu yisoson, ndonkangulela, o zangom, o, okutwako, banga kade, o kansi ze. Omvemnyama, nobanti ayputa yeke nbetun.
He is a busy man.
Ilse za tu so basi kumpule, indoba sendelepi, indoko kaka lokubazali beitu, minani nga banastalelaiba, bampeleli yachika, nobichika ngolpukshobo, kalemzin.
The reason why we should embrace where, why, where we are married to is because you as our parents, you said to us, you should keep on holding, whether it's not good, things are not good in our in-laws, but we should keep holding on, we should press on.
Abelitlashake, abantu ana unauze ucho, uti kubonyamesela, na unaucho kabelitlash.
But with the two days, the children, you cannot say the same words to them.
N'kosi, N'kosi bosmasala bamna zozon, kisshobo zam, ezilapa, sibulela, indoba nizile apa. Sen sen zilizlo ngubulelo, ngokunge kaka krikonokrik.
I'm already saying my words of, vote of thanks to my mothers-in-law and those who are present.
Bapekele nizitulo betu, nanabonunchalo, nke, bapekele nizitulo ngapambili. Di kengbagi, ndibazisile, abantu abalapendi, ninguoku?
I think I introduced everybody present here.
Eh, sinabonono kata, niyababona bafa nabachka benyu ka apa, o, 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 o kala, abazauchongi, zinto siyambengoktwango.
We also have people from protection services, you can see them, they are moving around, making sure that everything is in order.
Chonga ke bo nandizuti ma babulise, ukwenzelba, kaku kwe zipo apa, baba ngaku lekakke.
I want us them to greet you or to raise their hands so that if there are any people who are doing things wrong, they should be surprised by them.
But bazali bamndifuna ni tetenikululekile, nisazi indoba, nikuselekile apa lukona, upiko lokuselego, elkoyo, esiyambanalo, apo esiyambakona, ukwenzel indoba, ningo yiki. Uyayazi indo, eh, nina yo, nina, kukoyika, nibenesi ndwe ngatini apupepsuki, ngatumtana kuya koicha, koicha la, landuwi tetewonu.
But I want you, my parents, to be free to contribute, make your contribution without any fear, make, be sure that you are protected.
Siza uteta sitabala ale, ngezi indo esiklinga indoba, masizonkeze, glom tetos homelo, esizenga oapa, kwezinginzonge zalapa eh, Eastern Cape.
We will speak at length about the things that we think need to be amended in this amendment bill that we brought here in the Eastern Cape. And we should raise issues that we think are very important and prominent here in this province.
Beni siti manpina, di takusbasi zoting, ngoba uba iteka, nduse mnua, denorongo, uti tu, okpuma ngomge kala.
I think we should also echo as to why we are here, so that if you are at the wrong spot, you should quickly...
Wrong funeral, not spot, kautespoting, zo kungokse sporting, emamu yankaze, taven. Wrong funeral, if you have attended a wrong funeral, unashupeki, asisukuzu yapika o ambange kalu puma.
Please don't be disturbed, don't be shy to leave, we are not going to ask you where you are going to when you decide to leave.
Kotwa, sinetemba abalapa nova, abakafiki engamgamini, kwe keshalo fumana, esasmonelelo skachumenje, banga shala bona, ukwenzela, bakua zupache la, abantu abadala, abanga kwa zangu zo fika, glomtunbi, ukuba kutwani na eh, 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 tolopini ekua.
But even those who are not yet have reached the age of receiving their old age pension, they are allowed to sit so that they can carry the message to those who are at home so that they can inform them what were we discussing here.
N'yabulela ke ngoko, ngaba balapa, baninsi, siza unike la, ilunguletu, elixoni pekileyo, umama, umasango, ani tele vanya vanya, ukuba lemiteto sitingba mayixonyeleluwe, kuba kaloki mitetu esasi enzen, ngokiya, iya rusa, ensifumanisindoba, kuba ako, usielelo nuzindo. Kuba ngoko besisa fika na se boholumenje, singe kaya zwa kpekuanga pina.
We are all welcome, and then I will give to the honourable member, Honourable Masango, to give us a brief overview of this amendment.
Kotwa ke, kuyo yonke, lo ndo umama, umasango, azanenzela yona, enichilela, enitakangela, ukuba lom tetos homelo, kuba umtetu abantu abadala, dala wasekwa. But, sifumanisindoba, kunekepu izkeu, esifanilekile esizlungi, umzekel.
We'll give to Honourable Masango, she is the one who is going to give you an overview of this amendment because we've realized that in the current act, there are some gaps that are there. For example.
Bekuenge kolemdo yokoba, abantu abadala, bakui chwenga, bazuguluana babo. Abantu ana, ababa zala yo, baba kui cheku, ba befunale mari engamgam.
In the olden days, there was no actions or things like our parents or elderly people being strangled by their own children or grandchildren and abuse them because they wanted this pension. In the olden days, or during the time of their current year, act, there were no such activities taking place.
Andisa teti ngale, yoku reichwa, kabazuguluana beitu, sa ukubat, badalaka ngak, besiti, nokoko talasizklinile, inoba kuraiti ngoku itesa, eh, liampile, uzklinile, magakasontele, ngoba, lenulazi, iti ikuzi ide iya puma, ube ulala, n'umtana, induenge koyo.
Not even to mention the rape part of it, that our grandchildren are raping us. They are saying we've been keeping us safe for too long, they should now come close to us and also the myth that for them to get rid of the HIV, for it to be cured, they should have intercourse with a young child.
Very good, ten over ten interpreter. Now, kuba pshungu, uketanke ndwe zinja lo, kotwa, kufanile stetil.
It is very painful to talk about such things, but we have to talk about them.
Ipinda ke ngokinaki, ituba abantu abadala, singa fu ni, ukyo zirreporta esiti, esizenzo, si siti, n'umtana, n'umtana.
And then on our side, as the elderly people, we don't want to come forward and report this incident because we say, "This is my grandchild."
Siza utela apa, indoko ba, bayapela, abantu abadala, bepela luchuku mezo, be sifa zizstresi, be funyanwa zin, zezantoba ti itamenzi, abemke loa zingondo. Si stresi songa yaswa, nditi milentoni kuyo apa.
And we are losing a lot of our elderly people, they are dying, things like stress, dementia, and many ailments, because they are dying with this pain, because they don't know what to do.
Sifunu zo utikuni, medani, niyanga pambi, ukuba onunchalo, abako kufuchane kuwe, iya e polis kampu, kuyo ubeki nnele, ukuba ayilandeleki, kulo okoti itile, ngulelo polis ali itile, siza ushi numbers apa, nibakile, niskalele, tinasi zaukazu landelela, kwenze kantoni, nge case ka mama, ubanbani, enginene itile, engalandeleki yo.
We want to appeal to you, please come forward and talk about these things. Report them to the social workers, if the social workers are far, go to the police stations or to the courts, and even if then they don't take any steps about your complaint, you can even report them to us, we are going to give you numbers so that we can go back to them and inquire from them as to what happened about a particular case.
Siza ni bongo za ke bazali, limiteto si misela yo, si palamente, ayondo yukritikasha, nindoko ba sisiga imali yaba hafi, kapesko ba sifunu sondelela, kufuchane kuni, nibone indoba nina? Nonyuluhumenje, go ninety-four, nisiti manikoke loe, naani ke ngoko, nikua ngoholumenje, ngoba sati, sonke apenki, nisaulaula.
We therefore appealing to you, parents, that you should please contribute and work with us, come forward so that you should understand that with this program that we're bringing to you from parliament, it's not just a waste of taxpayers' money. We are trying to make sure that your voice is also encompassed and taken into cognizance when we promote these laws, so that you should understand that when you voted, you voted with the intention that people should govern, so that you make point, you make sure that you contribute in that governance that you voted for. The only thing is that we were saying there are children who are ill-treated in their homes, who are being abused by the elderly people. They are being abused by the elderly people. They are being abused by the elderly people. They are being abused by the elderly people. As I said that I am now going to give over to the person who's going to get into the gist of this meeting and gathering today. And after she has finished, you'll be given time to make your contributions. And those who want to make contributions will be given slots to take positions in the passage here. And please smile, you must be smiling because you'll be live on TV. So that you should tell us that among the things that you have mentioned, you have left this and that and that because here in Maturali we experience these problems. But please do not repeat that is in the old act or in the current act, do not repeat that. And but if you have issues which are very sensitive and delicate that needs privacy, you can approach the table where you can give your input at the table and report your issue there. And also please do believe that you are live on TV, on Twitter, on Facebook and YouTube. If you have grandchildren who have all those technology, you can call them and ask them if they don't see you on TV.
Let me tell you this because it's my last time to speak, I will not speak after this
or after I've taken my seat. Last week, we were together with the president where he was signing a 12th language. As you see the gentleman next to me, what he is doing, that is the language that was added as a text, 12th language in South African languages, which is referred to as the South African sign language. And you speaker, as you are aware that we have that 12th language, we supposed to have those people who are adding that language in our meetings, in gatherings like these ones and our meetings in the councils. We need, do need somebody will be doing this, that this gentleman next to me is doing, adding the sign language as the 12th language. Let me tell you this because it's my last time to speak, I will not speak after this or after I've taken my seat. Last week, we were together with the president where he was signing a 12th language. As you see the gentleman next to me, what he is doing, that is the language that was added as a text, 12th language in South African languages, which is referred to as the South African sign language. And you speaker, as you are aware that we have that 12th language, we supposed to have those people who are adding that language in our meetings, in gatherings like these ones and our meetings in the councils. We need, do need somebody will be doing this, that this gentleman next to me is doing, adding the sign language as the 12th language.
Then therefore, na says court, na says police station, uza wakonumdo za ufundiswa, akwazuteta, nobutetakanjani, azakrisi, na ni kenin gadinwa ngabo bandu, nifunde le language, oko ba ukwazubulisa.
As much as I'm here about the act, the bill that has to do with the older persons and the amendment thereof, I cannot leave behind this issue of the people whose disability has to do with them being deaf. Those people has been crying to deaf ears for about 16 years. And it took for them 16 years that has been signed now as the 12th language. But they could not even communicate within the courts, in the police stations, in all the other places because they cannot be heard in the way they understand or their kind of hearing. So it is why that we as a community, we are also encouraged that we should also make an effort of trying to learn this language, at least you should be able to greet and say bye-bye. And instead of clapping your hands, you should make this kind of sign, that is in the community of deaf, that's how it fits in, instead of clapping. So I'll hand over now to my honourable member who's going to take you through the bill.
Thank you Chairperson. I would also like to thank you all for having come through in this cold weather just to be with us and engaged on the Older Persons Amendment Bill. Mine is just to take you through what it is that we are going to be doing today. The honourable Chairperson has given you the context and the background of the amendment bill that we are discussing today. This bill seeks to amend the Older Persons Act that was enacted in 2006. The act was to address the implementation challenges. The bill also seeks to insert new definitions and new provisions relating to the monitoring and evaluation of all services to older persons. I'm just going to go through a few challenges that were identified by the department that led to the bill, to the act being amended. One of the gaps was the lack of coordination between government departments to deliver services to older persons. The other gap was the non-inclusion of in the act of the valuable role older person play in their families in terms of passing knowledge and wisdom to younger people. Also, it was identified that there is a lack of legal provisions for services to older persons with disabilities and chronic illnesses. One of the most important gaps as well was that of legal provision for the removal of older persons to temporary safe care. And that gap has resulted in older persons continuing staying with the abusers in cases where they have no alternative accommodation. Understanding that this summary has been circulated, I'm going to go straight into the key amendments of the bill. These include the strengthening, the protection and prevention of abuse of older persons. As I've said earlier, and the strengthening of coordination mechanisms between government departments. One of the key amendments also have to do with the elimination of harmful traditional practices, including witchcraft accusations against older persons. Also, it would look at enabling the Minister of Social Development in consultation with members of the provincial executive to make information available and counseling on non-communicable diseases. Also to strengthen the registration and monitoring of residential facilities and inclusion of persons who have been maltreated. Chairperson, I think I will end there and I think this provides a summary of what it is that we are seeking to engage on today and thank you so much.
With this look and I'm trying to gather my strength because it is very hurting what has been just mentioned. When we were coming up with the act that has to do with the children, there were people who were saying, yes, this democracy has brought the children an act that gives them some kind of independence or to control themselves.
Don't leave this thing that is saying people that they don't understand what is this government doing in terms of Abandua Batala and Abanduan Act?
We did not say the children should do whatever they like. The only thing is that we were saying there are children who are ill-treated in their homes, who are being abused by the elderly people, if there are parents who are ill-treating them in their homes. It is similar to the kind of abuse that the elderly people go through, that is like the Honourable Masango has indicated or alluded to. If for instance, you are old and ugly and dark in complexion, you are being accused of being a witch of witchcraft. And if you have been attacked by dementia, you happen to find yourself in a place that you don't know how you landed there, you are also accused of being.
And find out that you are naked.
And also found to be naked, then you are accused of being a witch.
You know Tata, I feel pity for you.
You will be in problem if you are dark in complexion. Can you stand up? You can face them so that they can see you. And firstly can be accused of being a foreign national. And secondly, the kind of hat he is having on his head with the colors that are just matching properly with his complexion, that color, that dark color just comes out clearly, he'll be accused of having fallen from what is called or referred to as a cage. Look the one next to you as to how dark is that person is. You see those who are next to you who are dark in complexion, they are the people who need to be protected. Those who are responsible for protection, they have indicated that we don't no more have enough seats. So now when we ask you to raise your hands for you to make your contribution, we'll ask you to lift your hands, you'll be given a sticker with a number so that you have only one chair in the front, the one who need to talk will come and take that seat. Usually, normally we have, we put the ten seats here, but because we can't wait for more seats to be brought in, we now give you chance to raise your hands, those who want to make contributions. Can we raise our hands on this side first? The hands we are raising, we raise our hands if we want to add something on this amendment bill. But we'll start with, from our left hand side. Bring them. Are we done on this side? I come from the Centre Massacane Service Centre in an area of Ngamakwe. At here for chair, I'm standing here not to ask on behalf of my centre, Massacane, but I'm here to ask on behalf of Muma Municipality, because I am the chair of that particular centre. I am here actually to add on what has been said by a previous speaker who was speaking here. The problem that you have is that we have a problem because some elderly people grow up in an age where they are supposed to be brought to those centres, but now the problem is that these centres in the area are all scattered, and then it makes it difficult for elderly people to access those centres. And the only service centre in Dagan is composed of three locations. And Dagan is composed of three locations, and it is the only service centre that caters for those locations. Indeed, Honorable Chair, we need a transport that will be able to transport the elderly people to go to have those services in those areas. And we know for a fact that things don't happen quick, and the saying says Rome was not built overnight. When I was looking at this bill, they told, the bill actually talks about the centres that are in the eastern cape, but the only one that I saw that was mentioned here is Tengela Centre for the Elderly. That said, accommodate few elderly women. We would like to have another old age home that will be able to solidly or specifically cater for the Muma Municipality. We are happy about that because we are able to eat and enjoy ourselves, but the other problem that we have is that we don't have a funding coming from government in order to help us to do activities of agriculture. I think that's where the problem lies. We would like government to provide us with sectors that will be located specifically in those service centres. By those words, that's my oral submission, and I thank you.
We will have the next speaker. May I please ask that when you come through, please let us know whether you support.
Listen to our views. The previous speaker has explained or alluded to a present situation that we are abused by our grandchildren that was staying with. Our children beat us up. As I'm speaking here, I am one of those victims. There is no, I'm saying so, it's because we have got a high rate of drugs that is befalling this country. And when we look at the situation, it seems as if there is no one who can be able to assist or address this catastrophe. Across the whole country, this phenomenon is not particular, in a particular area, but it's affecting the whole of South Africa. It is not as if we are not going to report, we do report such cases to government. It does not only come on the side of children. There is also this phenomenon comes on the side of elderly people, especially the father. There is also coming on the side of elderly people who are under the care of the mother. This thing or this phenomenon happens to all of us, that is why I encourage people to go and report these incidents. It says that you must go and report your child. They don't really take care of the matter, but now they do the opposite, they laugh at you when you report your case. We urge the present government, when we go to report the cases, they must not take us for granted, but they must address the matter immediately, with immediate effect. There are men who are abused by their spouses, who are monsters in this gathering. When they go to report to the police, they say, hey, my wife is abusing me. The policeman will just laugh at the matter. What do we do, because now the police people, they just laugh at us. Lastly, I want to speak on the issue of drugs that is so, so, so prevalent in this country. What is the solution? We ask, we go and knock to government, what must we do? There are many, many stories that are told, they are saying, no, the cause of these drugs was the cause of the foreign nationals who came to live in this country. It seems as if it's the truth, because we are old now, we come, we were born in the nineteen fifty's, we can see the cause of this phenomenon. Indeed, during our lifetime in those years, we did not experience such phenomenon of using drugs. The only drug that we knew or were familiar with was cannabis. It was actually better during those days, because if you were smoking cannabis, at least, I mean, you are looking as a gentleman, you were wearing nice, you were neat and clean, unlike these ones. When they brought this substance? Is this substance that is killing our nation? Government, what must we do? I thank you. I stand to support the bill hundred and fifty percent. Thank you.
Can we have the next contribution, please? Can we, can we have the stickers for contribution here in the front, please, on the right hand, on my right hand side?
Greetings to everybody in this hall. My name is Zwelandile Konzele. I am the Chairperson of Raymond Mshaba Old Persons Forum. I'm coming from Etembe Nisenda. Indeed, the previous gentleman has spoken mouthful. Before I go forward, before I go forward, but now there is a question that is lingering in my mind. About three months ago, we had a funeral in my area, I live. We were burying an elderly woman. Fortunately, the social worker who works at Etembe Nisenda is aware of that situation or of that particular occurrence. Yes, now, the question that I have and I'm posing to the panel is that if I'm an elderly person and then now there is a conflict amongst my children regarding my pensions, isn't there an opportunity for government to intervene on my behalf? And if maybe I'm supposed to buy groceries, if government will take over that responsibility of buying groceries on my behalf because of the conflict among my children regarding my pension? The problem or the source of conflict starts with the money, money is the source of the problem. The problem that we experience is that there is peace and harmony amongst the family members the whole month, but now when the payday comes, the problem starts. My proposal therefore is that can't government perhaps maybe intervene or we include that proposal in the bill in a situation like this? The proposal is that we have got two centres in Porfalo. The problem is that in Forte Forte, we are living in a township, now it's very, very difficult now to find a site that will accommodate elderly people, whereas if you compare in the rural areas, the land is so vast, therefore it's easy for people to access, to have access for sites to make centres. My proposal therefore is that I'm pleading with the government to assist us, especially for people like us who live in the township, so that the government of the municipality can intervene on our behalf to find a site for us whereby we can have those centres for elderly people in the townships. As I've said before, the gentleman before me has said a lot of things, therefore I won't be long. I thank you.
I would like to take this opportunity to greet the panel in the table led by the Honorable Chaplain. Also, special greetings go to the elderly people who are here and by those words, I'm saying all protocol observed.
Mna ndi ngonfusi winingawe.
My name is Numpusi winingawe.
Ndisukapaa ey remondi mshaba. Ndigu chaplain we foramea paya ey remondi mshaba.
I am coming from Remondi Mshaba and I'm also the chaplain of Remondi Mshaba.
Isenda yamku se tembi.
At the center that I represent or I preside over is Etembi.
Mna ken ndi ngonfusi winingawe ndi ayisapotele pile kahulmende azena yo namchange apa.
Indeed, Honorable Chair, in my capacity or I as Numpusi winingawe, I stand to support the bill.
Also ndi ngwenela indokoku ba ezinyezesindu esizazeteta apa. Simke apa sinaaloi tebaloba uhulmenda nga ikuwazi nduwe tile enya kazo ikuwazi siso kuwazi ba sisebensani nomaspa labitu.
Indeed, I want us when we leave this particular gathering, I want us to leave this gathering with hope and with a notion that indeed government can be able to fulfill certain promises and also perhaps maybe with a notion that government is unable to fulfill certain promises.
Eyeyo nandu ken diseleyo apa namchanga pambili. Ndinespakamiso sokoku ba isenda zabanda badala. Makubekona onompilo okanye ikekiva kisenda nganye babebabini. Kuba. Abanda badala imosi avongo kuba pelelo angamani bangakuwazuku yesendini. Akule zinso ekile ekufuneka zichekishiwe. Lo nditetukuti ngo kuangoku londo ayikuwazuku enzeka kuba akukozikekiva ziyambela isenda zetu.
Indeed, Honorable Chair, my proposal is that each and every center that we have must comprise of two caregivers. You must understand that the elderly people, they are suffering like diabetes and so on and therefore we would like the caregivers to go and visit those elderly people.
Man dibuleleke kahulu ndi apela apengus.
That is my submission and I thank you for your attention.
Ey ikamalam na nyungnotozi Sokha.
My name is Notozi Sokha.
Ndisoka Tendane.
I come from Tendane.
Kuisenda ekutwangu Ikamba ililhe service center.
I am coming from Ikamba Service Center from Tendane.
Ipe lenye itas.
For the record, I stand to support the bill.
Di mi apa ken goku. Di vile indokokwa nabandabachile ngepile kukwakiwakwa isenda zetu.
Indeed, as I'm here, I heard that people have spoken about the building of those centers.
Isenda zetu.
But now the only lacking problem is that we don't have funding to build those centers.
Siga fumeleka ngakananjalo no kuba singa akha.
We are not even allowed actually in our capacities, people who live in those centers, to build those centers.
Siyataela ken goko indobana kule pile sifakele isishomelo isitinachi njangenge skolo sakelu isenda zabanda badala.
We would like to say that there must be a clause that must be added on the bill to say that we as schools, there must be some sort of a provision so that we can build centers in such land.
Also sinazo ikegivers kodwa ezinyezefana nabaspegelayo azivomeleka ngasbajala kule manisipiyoyo o social development.
Indeed, I want to highlight that we do have caregivers who cook for us but now the law does not allow us actually to pay them from our stipend that were offered by the department.
As yambilesko odinaita zetu zipake ezintanga miswe kutoma kumete ndezimbise.
And then now when these caregivers go to attend certain meetings, the duty is imposed upon us as elderly people now to do the cooking.
Siyataela indobana nokoma babonelele si kangi nabanyabantu bespegel.
We would like to have a provision whereby these people can be supported and to have alternative personnel who can be able to cook for us in their absence.
Apa kapaka tukwazi structures that you see zelewi mi kuku apa kwezukule mitlabasi ipiyoyo sithala kuyo. Ngokoke siesifike sekakese we kutatua ndezo croissants chakyanga lema lisibole kweni kholme siyale securities sipadaliko kholme.
We would like government to employ security personnel so that they can secure our informal settlements that will build the centers because sometimes when we are away, there's baklari, people take our food, groceries and other things that are able to sustain our living.
Also apemoma nasempasha asina yo old age home. Ikona ken gekam kutingela.
We do have a name called Tungela by name but here in Moma and Mbache, we don't really, really have a practical center.
Etata banda by twenty kuphe.
It accommodates only, only 20 people.
Le old age home ke buakunga iwa payanga bon indobana kwa is structures asayo yenzwe ngeprefabs.
If maybe the honorable members can do oversight there, the structure is very, very bad.
Mshaba wana mkulu sinayo siyataela at least ibekona nokuka itiane sibena yenyi old age home.
The land is so vast, it's so big, but now we want another old age home that can be built in Kajani.
Ben tlebe tuna siyatale fana namanyama tukupesha kweni.
It must be beautiful, modern, as the same as the one that is on the other side.
Kwakona kwezusenda zetu apa utandane zine only four. Utandane zehole in the wellness centers zabanda badala.
The centers that accommodate elderly people in Tendane, we've got only four centers.
Tendane mkulu kakulu siyatala more centers.
Tendane area is so big, that's why we need some additional centers.
Ngamakwe zisixka esabanda badala mkulu.
We only have six old age home centers.
Ape twazi eightka mkulu.
Butterworth, we've got only eight whereas butterworth is very, very big also in size.
Siyataela ke kakulu kakulu indobana senzele songezele ezisenda.
We plead, plead, plead to say that they must add more centers for us.
Kwakona apa kwezusenda zetu singa makta kwaza namakta kwakulai.
In these centers, we find out that we've got elderly women and men who are very, very sick and unwell.
I clinic is zetu ufumasi indobana five to six kilometers away.
And in order for you to go to the clinic, you've got to walk five to six kilometers.
Asina zo genesma lisokwelu ufumasi wa ukwelu peke clinic 100 ren.
We don't even have money to go to the clinic as a result, we've got to fork out of our pockets 100 ren.
Siyatala jim mobile clinics zinke ne kuisenda zegemines tile sivomele nenan.
We want the mobile clinics to come and visit our centers with acumen with those people who live in those centers.
Eyokebe apa kule pile siyatale indobana kui amendment ya kona. Sifakele indokobana abanda badala ba yekukfola. Siyafola zpankini siyafola kuyoyo onkin dao. Sibatala futasissuke lo ngabantu ananabasuke.
Lastly, lastly, I would like a clause to be added on this bill that the elderly people must not be compelled to stand in the long queues because now the children don't want to actually to give space to the elderly people. Therefore, I propose that that clause of elderly people to be on the queues, that one must be to away and be inserted in the bill to say elderly people must not queue in the lines.
Man dibuli se eholweni uongumdalapa namchange. Ikamalam, ndigu fuisekambilini.
My name is Josekambilini.
Ikayalape zakwiki kwami ndio mbia kwama pisa ndendele ngamakwe kwambilini. Ikayalili kwama pisa ezakwiki.
Oh, I'm coming from an area of Zakwiki from my pisa family.
Ndigu mamombilini mfaswa se manuwabini.
I'm married to the manuwabini family.
Ndigu maglen dao, ndigu melo ikusela adult center.
I am standing here representing Kusela Adult Center.
Apa ezakwiki?
Here in Zakwiki.
Payake sinengaki kakulu kodwa ke siyakoni no kubana kwa Amatole elapa namchange isa ochoi solve.
We are hoping that the president of Amatole District Municipality or Region will assist us in our area in Zakwiki.
Paya sinesenda, sendaleyo esai vulango januariklo niaka.
There we've got a center that was officially opened in January this year.
Siyesazama kanga ngoko ke uku yambela kodwa akukabi kondo itakai.
We tried by all means actually to make some strides to assist the center but now up to now, things are not clear as to what is the way forward.
Sina makta kwaza na paya I28.
We've got elderly women, they are 28 in number.
Lo makta kwaza na aja kuti esbogotweni ngoba sitababeti maliyo tengukuja.
And those elderly women are dependent on us because we have to buy groceries out of our own pockets.
Isenda layo sa esaytalela emzinikodwa ke isaityo nasina yo kodwa ayikakakiwa.
Indeed, we had to ask for accommodation to a particular family but on the other hand, we do have a site but it has not been built as yet.
Kuisindo ezitezbe zbe no wunsimakuti siyesi sitaswe guungu nosani olapa ekthale nkuji.
We get support from a particular nosani who is, who dwells in our area.
So si konde indokokwana sitese saufa indokokwana kuzoba kolomniyata la namchange sakoni indokokwana naati masbanda kanya keenzeli indokokwana sizo kuwazukete.
Yes, we were grateful to hear that it will be this public hearing so that we can be able to actually comment about our situation.
Siyavuya ke kasi tetan ngamatole ngoba sinengaki amanzi kakulu amanzi asinawo.
We are happy to hear that Amatole District is here because we've got a lack of water, we don't have water at all.
Asina zone tepu asina yo nandoni so si thomekeke amanzi inezao tuswata kwalenga ma pele siyena uklomis.
We are dependent on water that we have to take from and take by our pockets because we don't have water.
Siyataela uhulmende ange neleleka kulu klon dao.
We require government's intervention.
Siyazkali caregivers ziyenobanga bana akukabi konto sipiyoyo ukhulmende kodwa siyazkali caregivers ngoba akuyekubekomtambi ingake tile ekakwa zaneni sibesinge namto ukufuchane olode onosnet.
We require caregivers to come, to come and visit our center because from time to time, we do experience a situation whereby there is a sick elderly person. That is why we are saying government, even though we are not yet getting support from you but please give us caregivers so that the caregivers can come and visit us in times of need.
Isenda kele ya makta kwaza na siyabonindokokwana onwabile kunakai chele ziljinzau koba eziljinzau awonwabanga kodwa koeke atibana ewonke ayafutela ana ubonba onwabile.
Indeed, what we are experiencing is that the elderly people are not happy from their families but when they stay in those centers, we see a big change because they are able to share information and everything and we see that they are happy when they live in those centers as compared to when they live within their families.
Uta dunusani kolosi tetanga yewaswaya wasineta wasinikaninsimby okshoja amakta kwaza na etu ayashoja insimbi.
Indeed, Mr. Nusand actually assists us a great deal because now the elderly people are actually involved in activities like big beads work. So we are grateful for such activities that are happening amongst the elderly people.
Ayachi ma amakta kwaza na etu ningatubaningawa boona innene innene ningavakamnanti.
Honorable Chair, you'll be very surprised because our elderly people, they do training activities. When you see them, you will be very, very surprised.
Kuko amakta kwaza na amatatu esinawo afuna yukiasingama siddesio ateta ke kirifangoba awanasu wheelchairs.
We've got some elderly people that are keen to visit those sites but now the reason is they can't walk, they need wheelchairs, we normally transport them by using wheelbarrows.
Siyesi konde indokobana sivakapshungu ke no kubalo kindelela intanga furuambi wheelchair nomtomtala.
We are so sudden because the road infrastructure is very bad as such that an elderly person can go through that particular road.
Siyataela kebe tuna na ukhulmende ange neleleka kulu klo mtrimi.
We want government to intervene in this area.
Enya ke indo endi zakui tetabetuna nasiyateli indokokwana isipedele no ko esisa setso wa nisikunisi nisiteli koba sinengaki isipedele asina zone festili iklasi zopukele aziklasi asina zhuilchairs ubasisewa amakta kwaza na etu akukozuilchairs espedele ifestili uba alalisi uba balalisiwe abantu mangenelo angmoya wasepsika obanda yo koba akukozuifestili iklasi zopuka shkama kalpo.
We'd like actually this committee to visit and to oversee in this Butterworth Hospital because the windows are broken, there are no wheelchairs and people are suffering because it's winter season and that's why they are affected. Therefore, request that help this committee can think about the idea of going and doing oversight over that hospital.
Ikusela adult center kele.
I am standing here representing Kusela Adult Center.
Umte tos komela onenda ukas.
Indeed, I support the bill.
Pansi ngo shukumezola bantabadala pansi. Engosima maleye yespecialists ifaka kwa health by alaselle and then no speaker uyayipala pansi utikuza ukekukangeli ma angenza njani ke kuangelwe nalapo.
Indeed, the issue of hospital, we are going to direct that query to the Department of Health and luckily in the table we've got the Speaker of the Municipality who is also going to make sure that the issue is being followed up.
Asizu manesi pendula njongo ba ndimaneni thukumiseka difunupendula asizu ukonupendula kodwa ndifunukuti o social weka njongo basmatshali sapan ngapambili. Sinetemba indoba bazitata zonge ezukukata zezinkinga. Mapendule ekfalele mapendule bayano uta asizu ukona ukpendula izindoza se kusela. Kusela indawakama utatanga? Ekusela asizu kuwazi ma mapendule. Number two, lomzindi wa amanzi. Uspika uyautata ingake ndaba yamanzi apa anongo pele. Siyayasmos kugekwa kito ito yenzimefale nevinkile ingaye ndaba amanzi. Kodwa asizu upela upela amanja singa zitati ezingake. Okunye, kuzao funeka isocial weka ikupeka kula mamutibatwala amanzi indoko. Kuchekishiwe indoba itini ndo ya paya azabuya ipendule apa. Nukuki abaztenge layo ngaba irregistashive na londau zonge zonukata betuna singa linti ela klasalu funeka sipendule zonge. Ma kuyiwe kwa babantu njongo basilhe lumtelega ngapome uzasneki ndowe bambeka yokeapa uti. Kuteni beztenge lukuki akota ma register. Two, ma kuyiwe kwezinda u kutwe akukozi. Ikekivazi esiyazio indobumtindiwa sunzima ma bo sabeli indobitini ndo awana ukendula ngolo shkobe bantu nabatalu utizpekele nbabaschisile basauti. Ma kuyo bakwinkela yo ukenduleka bakusela ne ngelkele right nsmilo. Ni bu yeniza umapa ngapambili betun nisitazile kuteni nisitima bazipakele kuzakuensekanduni. Sizfumene esizazfakela kusishomelo nteeto basi zasfaka kanjani na engos. Kubo tata kubo.
Fellow South Africans, in brief, we have noted certain things.
Masizole engini masizole engos.
Yeah, we have noted many things that were highlighted by the speakers in the podium but now as the members of parliament in the table, we don't have answers for everything. Luckily, we do have social workers who are here who are going to answer in all those queries that were asked here by the people and also the issue of saying that the elderly people must cook for themselves when the caregivers are not around. We need answers in that because elderly people must also be given dignity. Therefore, there must be someone who's going to account for that to say that yes, if we have got a registered center, how come now that there are certain things that are not going right in those centers? And also, we would like people actually, the officials, to visit those centers without caregivers so that they can find out what is really happening. As I'm about to close, that we will ask people, if maybe there are people who have got some certain matters that they will ask to raise, maybe that person can be asked aside to give more details of that situation. As we move.
Ndigu sandile ewula. Opuma parigusenda ekutwali Tembaletu.
My name is Sandile Ewula under the center called Itembalitu.
Indali paramela apa inye ndizoli tasa lepe.
I am here first and foremost to support the bill.
Siyataela ukhulmende asinete.
We want assistance from government.
Utala sibukele kwanenele ngoku ngoku bulawo kwama kwa kwaza ngunu nito.
Indeed, we are saying that enough is enough because the elderly women now they are herded, are being beheaded. We are saying enough is enough of that abuse.
Omama be tu bakabo kusala kunzi ma babo otwe isinzi. O ikamandwa.
Our elderly people are very, very, very afraid to stay at home because they are afraid of the abuse coming from their children.
Siyataela ke ukhulmende jamaga gezitebu. Obanga aba uyeshulaga la negesile kuti sali bo na tinitebu.
We want assistance or intervention from government. If government fails to intervene, we are going to take the law into our hands.
Kunzi ma bafala wenzimbe minya. Uma yokuma bo otwa bo ikata itina apa.
It's very, very difficult for the elderly women because now they shut the doors because they are afraid of our agenda as males.
Siyatala ke ukhulmende ngasaka kasnetu soge klon dao.
We want assistance from government to intervene in this area.
Jekiteka po dzongela ke ngukwiti Tembaletu. Usosaluaka wetu onutaru betu baspetega gupsu.
I want to actually give a testimony that at Itembalitu, our social workers are treating us very well.
Ingake sinayo ke inye ndizautela kapawuhulmende. Ma kubekusbonelere subonolala omatanga asina amazi ethepina asina antoni. Siyakiamaza mta kwa wasemblanze nukuphe.
The intervention that we require from government is to give us tanks because we don't have taps, we don't have tanks, we depend on the dirty water from the rivers. We want such intervention from our government. As I close, I support the bill.
Ngacheetani.
Can I speak?
Di manobo lisa. Ape Moma, dibulele na le mini banti ifuman. Na kanti ngasanginbea raichinga inga yezindo. Imamanti me apa 25. Amantungoma India Matomela.
My name is Noma India Matomela.
Emakalakan.
From Makalakanwa.
Wa wat 22. Wat 22.
In wat 22.
Ubalapakwa mtendau isale ndakonbanti amanisilela ngayimpili. Ndange nelewa angumtto umtana umtto. Wande ensa wande ensa umtana moindoba sana. Ukundishwengula kustose spange. Kanti kutikwa uyayasin ndoba ubona enfishlakalu. Kanti ndiboniwe kombonileyo akateta. Mna ken ndienda munya onda yemda fonela mapolisa. Afika mapolisa ngotele yaben dixeleni etwinzese mbinie. Ape jimi ejojo mbienlamu. Upule ifestile.
The reason why I'm here is because I have a sad story personally and it was even hard for me to come here because I'm suffering with some certain illnesses. I want to speak the truth to say that there was a situation whereby myself and my... when my daughter were raped, that is why I am here.
Wa pula ifestile.
That man broke the window and got inside.
Wabe engena ndaluanaye.
And I was fighting with him whilst he was still trying to rape me.
Kaitiba ngapesu.
When he was trying to climb on top of me.
Wasikeka ipeni festile jojo mbelam.
And then he was cut by the glass of my shack.
Ikazi lawa pansi ape festile.
And his blood fell on the window.
Wasokwela pe petini lakapaze la pe mashiti ni am.
And then he climbed on top of the bed and the blood spilled all over the bed.
Indompele ya mke yayeka ninety balu na idwani ya inga pilanga ndilele na ya pe peti.
My daughter, who was born in 1990, was with me, she was not well and then we were sleeping together in my bed with my daughter.
Ndakondu ba nokwandi pasa misekile nalapengondu.
And I was mentally disturbed by this occurrence.
Wa funi foni datan nayo yaben di nayo.
This perpetrator firstly asked me to give him the phone and then I said, "No, I don't have a phone."
Tenet ma pume akapuma mnyang kubaga lungu kupume ngela shobo wa pinda wa kweleka wa po pakwa kola.
As he was trying to escape, he didn't go, he didn't escape through the door. He had to escape through the window and he was also cut.
Utenet we mke 29 ndapuma nalomdana ndatima sambi sisikala kabezze ifungu kuba in numbers ndixeleni ndinaso kubandi shananalomdana.
When he fled in 29, I said to my daughter, "Let us go and report the case" because I had the numbers to conduct the relevant people.
Nde ndamkeleke uape mapoliseni Afika.
The policeman arrived.
Atimanti ambandia etutuzela.
And then they referred me to a tutuzela center.
Ndabena ndatia nduzuamba kuba logesin sana simbi nisao sheka nabani na.
I refused to leave because I had two infants that I was staying with. I refused to leave for that reason.
Envenkoko ke sasa bayebesa aba amapolisa anditata andisake paye police station.
The policeman came in the following morning and they transported me to the nearest police station.
Yasfaka statement. Apa ati azapanda.
I issued a statement and then they said they are going to actually make sure that they investigate the case.
Genneba keska tizonda ba kaidela balomt undenzelendo opila pakoyo wa ba.
By God's mercy, I was able to tell the policeman that this man who raped me is badly injured because he was cutting the hand and fortunately, he was apprehended.
Saye pa kaken goku enel nayba watu ebesebenze e e e e e. E bruas ebese tata i i isjobe bruas ma usike kilemos.
He was apprehended and when he was asked why he has a wound, he said, "No, I was working at a bruise, that is why I got injured."
Awe tatiweke wasiwakwa valelo.
He was apprehended and incarcerated.
Saamba yafiki dete yejala sabizo.
When the trial date came, we were asked to come.
Saamba ke sitese skin de sabizo. Safumanseka umtu upumile gepele. Ikala lamke labalini ba akazuzundi bulalela pana.
To my surprise, when we went there to court, we found out that he has been released on bail but what worried me the most is that isn't he gonna come now and murder me?
Kubaga logolo ukhulmende indotayenzeka apa kuti witata anyways ba inobamshambi. Dashala ken ndinumuteka ndaten da half minded apenjoko nda yekiniki.
It's because the present government doesn't take such things seriously. As a result, I was actually mentally disturbed. As a result, I was actually mentally disturbed, I even went to the clinic.
Sitesa opuma ke tutuzela kwa fumanse kindoba ke mastibane ano kere.
After we went to.
Kolo ngungu mam, mazize ngapambili eziztuloko ba ndoba tatali kwa balapa panji. Mazize here in these rows.
Uh, gentlemen, please bring forward the chairs because we've got some elderly people who need to sit in front.
Nde ya ndiku bayo ke minakwa ba ndipasa miset, apen nundu. Indoba ngjeka ekuchiwengokuwa, sambanti saushala na banina, apenji.
What made me to be mentally disturbed was the fact that if this man is released, who is going to protect me in my house?
Upindi le kutikwa wandipendulele ngakatini wovwene ku la pae terminas umtana, wa bandu.
After this incident, my incident, he again raped someone in terminas, and again, he was arrested.
Kenseki kaebo ke le mini ndio tatuwa ngayo ikuchulumende, ifungu kukchoki zundi beka apa.
Uh, it happened that the government came and brought me.
Lande nakijala.
The case was opened.
Utikwa wenza ke, saki sili ndile ngonai, kala okungena ngoten.
As we're waiting for the case to proceed at nine, as it was supposed to start at ten.
Wa koke ama bandua asuka pi, etomo epeki swapi, emtata.
There were some prisoners that were transported from Tomo to Umtata.
Afika pe kua, amisa ama polisa ekwelena la ma bandua suke emtata.
Uh, the policeman stopped here in Kua, carrying those prisoners from Umtata.
Asuka ke ngukela puma eli nyibanja eli ngase mzevenini. La tati modoli mka na elo chaissa umtu apema Kalakan.
And then another prisoner jumped and escaped, and then took the kickers, the car keys, and smashed someone not far away.
Ngelo tla shakutikwa wandipendulela wa betwa ke wa ulawa lomtana.
And also that priest, that, that inmate, uh, was arrested and was killed, uh, by the mob.
Andikabi right itige na ngoku, kotoa ken dia, ndiabulela kuba, utata lowe tumati ba wasense li kaebo. Then ifu mani proche, i, 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 i food passele etuwa, ifu manapetuwa.
Yes, indeed, I am.
Disaziba nditati ndo inu.
I am equally grateful for the provision that was done by our former president Mandela because I was assisted here to get food passes in Itowa.
Eh, etuwa.
Uh, and I doja.
Gokokoke, kosiboneleloska chulumende.
We were getting that grant from the government.
Ndakiske, ndazo fika, eminyake nindina sixty-nine.
As I'm speaking to you, Honorable Chair, I am sixty-nine years of old.
Amanzi, amanzi ke onake, ndo apiuanga bandu kuba logi tepas pumi manzi.
We don't have taps, I used to depend, uh, from people to provide me with water.
Diya itasa dentinga akasini sisi kellele yo na, diya shindha.
Indeed, I support the bill.
All right, Engosi Mam.
Thank you.
Uyayazba, i rizi nyoba umama ti mieka tete. Kuku ba ngelini klesu teta, ikwenza opile mpifungu inu. Siya bulela mama, eh, eh, ndo si vitanda yo indobumama uti. Amakosa akwa social development amnduenduela. Azamukumneti sakotoa awakwazu tabellela because une challenge kaya yaban duan. Mama, mama.
Mama.
Siya funu balise eli gamala se wat thirty-two Makalakan. Twenty-two Makalakan, upale, u, ulandike pa, u, 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 upalise pa. Sithe abando abangi na ukwazu teta, kuba utikompe amanzi mama kwazu teta. Sithe esinyezikonezimasikizi, ma bapalise paya, sizu ukwazu kwenzu landele. Umama uyasalelu yopela kwa le case ipelekanjani. Tikubenaye, siya bulela, siya mtanda za kuba yonkindo, si ipose mtanda zui. Disapina ndiakela bangakwazio, ukubane sibindi, so ma apa, izi ndozi ngatisimasikizi. Bangaya papa balise, oka nyusa uyako bo, umtu lupalisa yo mama. Because awana umaita shiliten kuseki, kotoa uzaufuneka asondele kuwe. Si funu kwanzi follow up no landelela. Lamakosa awaka ukwebi lo msebenzo unika inka soku mama. Kumu yamva uti andikabi right even. Masivumela anneke indoba, oh mama balapa ngapange. Ba pinde kutika kukwizutulo, zizi swekulenda wungu. Ungenu, ngaba okun genua ngapama kuiso njani, buti zize apa skoni spaceapa ngapambili. Masieke, sipelennda wuningo, singa koni zanla za bashekle.
Can we see a show of hands?
Ainoka ba koba ninsika ku, kaba, kaba, ram, ram, tui, uni bazal.
Let us be brief.
Um, Engosi msha ngapambili. Ikamala mnandi ngu Nomaza Sanda.
My name is Nomaza Sanda, and I greet you, Honorable Chair.
Ndibulisazonge induenduendu koyenke.
Greetings to all the visitors who are here.
Ndipuma mna, kulanda wo, kulasenda kutwa. Kulasenda i, ilapa Msobomvu, i clinic.
Uh, I'm coming from that center. In the clinic of Msobomvu.
Kumava etu.
It's called Mava Etu.
Kotoa andizu kutetanga yo, kanti mulenda.
But now, I'm not going to speak on behalf of that center here.
And andizu slega ngoba kubuchungu kuti singa bazal.
I'm not going to make it a laughingstock because it's very, the situation is very, very bad that is facing us as parents.
Ndya ivan ndetetwa yango chulumende. Ndya ivan indo aiteta.
Yes.
Ota, ndinenda wo ebuchungu, abanduan abetu abapangeeli. Se kuti kubekwazi zindozi ngakanjana, kunidla indoba abapangeeli. Imisabenzia iko, umtana umfuni sangama api, jonga ngogondi nobele first got in sugestending.
Yeah, then the reason why I'm saying so is because the situation that we're facing is very, very bad. Our children don't have job opportunities, we feed them through handouts. That is why I'm here, I'm a street vendor, that is why I'm also here. Because the reason why we have got this, this high rate of drugs, abuse and so on, is because of high unemployment that is facing our children.
Ndibu yenit, agu kondo indi shupanjenga ndo etetwa yogo chulumende. Eighteen, eighteen to thirty-five. Umdana no eighteen uzauzan ntoni, M seventeen, efuneke seskolwe.
Uh, another issue that I want to pose is that the government prescribes that the job opportunities are available from eighteen years to thirty-five years. My question therefore is that, actually, my belief is that if you are eighteen years, you are supposed to be a school.
Lo una thirty-five, una thirty-seven, uyama ku forty, uyama ku fifty, uchan ntoni, unu ban ntoni.
Therefore, a person who is thirty-seven up to fifty years, how does that person cater for the well-being of himself?
Yola don di tige ma mumvan, andizu kuslega, and yazba ndisauslega nditin. Koba babanduan abetu ba lambi la banguni.
That is why, Honorable Chair, I'm not going to make it a livestock. The reality out there is that our children are hungry and they don't have anything to clothe themselves.
Utengoba ma mumvan ndinga funsumtana ngalama api, abene diploma, uzekuzotwangoku. Denzumsekele apa, njeni ngapakati, i advertitlas kutwa, zitesa adverti, kufuneka kauapla yagle adverti. Ube nomtu, ona, ona diploma, i diploma yoke wenzana kolenama paper. Ukono umtana no kola i paper, ene diploma, ene sitang, ai kolon.
The problem, the question that I'm posing is that we have, the posts are advertised. We've got posts that are advertised, we've got posts that are advertised, uh, on the side of government to say a particular person must be a graduate with a diploma. But now, the other question is, if you have got such a diploma, how come now are you going to collect papers on the street?
I paper, ndiya kongoba mna, laloko koloa ngumtu onga fundanga onjenkamlo.
Uh, I think.
Andisanga ndive, indoba kutumtana fundile, ummistress wa onke, uyao fumanu msebenzo wa koli paper. Genka yongabiko komsebenzo, indonlondo.
I think, Honorable Chair, a person who's supposed to collect papers on the streets is someone who is illiterate like me. Therefore, it surprises me that a person who's like a, a teacher by profession must do such a duty.
Ebuchungu, ebuchungu ayibandaanga.
It's painful.
Ngoba, si betwa kwa ngaba betu.
It, it.
Si betwa kwa ngaba betu.
It's, it's a problem because now we are abused by our own.
Ndibusu, kuba, di nguenela okoku ba, iti puma lenza nganiso. Si besi vile ngama ke kwa zana, amakwa kwa zana lakutwa apa, ndive ndisastending, nda ivan ndisastending. Dakaze lupa omnnguwa me tjuwa. Indo et, abandu abatala, bayabalisa, isonge zeleloska chulumende, peskwa la tanki.
Uh, I heard from my uncle that there is a grant that is actually added from the social grant that is currently offered by the government.
Di kalela ke okoku ba kasipuma apa, ninabantu basuka yo, kwezi zindoke, nisi kazele okoku ba. Lesonge zelelosi, nikwa banda bangaka nani. Ngoba, abandu apa ba ile, di tumelefo yaba tu mnandawi va paya.
Okay.
Pak social development.
Uh, I, as we come out of this public hearing, I want to know that, uh, uh, how many people actually are granted this additional social grant? Because I overheard this thing, uh, when I was, uh, around.
Impendu lo ke ababu yana yo kabendikaze, kutwa kufuna lunga sasabenzio. Lo unga kwaziu kuzenzela ndo, ndati na ikotoa ndikonle ndoni teta yobo makulu.
Uh, they said that.
Uma kuluwe mka ngekaala, unai ndawe kwalala.
Uh, they said that this grant is directed to those people who cannot do anything for themselves and those who are disabled.
Ndibawa la ke okoku ba, ngaske siti kasi puma apa, si besi vile okoku ba. Kunikuwa abateni, esisonge zelelo, singa manesi talwa ngapa na ngapa ngabantu.
Uh, as I, as we come out of this public hearing, I want to know that who are those people who are benefiting? And how come do they benefit? We want those answers as we will be coming out of this public hearing.
Kotoa ke chulumende ndinga ilibale, ndifunu tatisba indoni luti eighteen to thirty-five. Abanduan asifuna bayeskolwe.
I want.
Abafa zuku ya, eskolwe kuba asina ndo, singa ma zese.
I want government to actually answer us on the issue of, to say that you employ from eighteen to thirty-five. Uh, we want, I want that particular answer.
Nomba asizu peduleka, kotoa ke masimke nokosi vile, okoku ba indoni litala londo. Kubani siyabetwa, umtana no fifty-five, ona forty-five, uchan ntoni, unu ban.
Uh, this is affecting us because how come a person from the age of forty-five and fifty-five be able to sustain him or herself?
Diya ivake kutwa kuki grant e three fifty. Grantile yo yo three fifty, abanduan eseti ba benele kula grantinje. Bebele kanga kange baba na banduan, bakatiwe, ba funu kwenzi nuela, bantuan abakatiwe. Indo kuyo kake bakatiwe.